Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, June 4, 2018. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the Administrator to note the roll call with Counselor Pearson absent. Move to the agenda and we have one item that's addition and that's to reset the public hearing on the ordinance for the proposed changes to the Home Rule Charter for July the 2nd. We also have a report from the city attorney on the appointments to the Charter Commission and then the police monthly report will not be available at this meeting. That, your pleasure with the addition and deletions.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Droba. Second by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the agenda with the addition and deletions. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the addition and deletions. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the May 21, 2018 regular City Council Meeting. Motion by Counselor Briggs.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba to approve the minutes as presented. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved. Thank you. Move to the resolution on transfers and accounts payable claims. We have two fund number 101, the general fund from Fund 812, the lodging tax fund, $286.81. We have accounts payable claims, the City of International Falls regular claims of $225,269.17. Airport Commission claims of $43,864.8. Airport Commission Terminal Project claims for Phase 1 of $65,443.44. Airport Commission Terminal Project Phase 2 claims of $77,428. Your pleasure with the resolution to approve the transfer and the accounts payable.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Droba to adopt the resolution approving the payment of claims and the transfer.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution.
Where does the airport fund, okay. At the end of April, we're in a negative.
Yep, cash flow.
Yeah.
And I know that there was, I believe at that point, there was a check, I thought it was for like $141,000 in process, that would lower that, but it still would be a negative figure.
Are we running a real negative or is...
I think it's just timing. There's a number of, it takes a little longer on the project ones because the FAA has to approve them and then they go to the state.
Okay, well, you've been right before on this, I'm just trying to keep up.
Fair question.
Okay.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, approving the transfer and the payment of claims. Thank you. Anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time, that doesn't have, it's not on the agenda? Thought there'd be an opportunity at the close of the meeting for that also. We'll move to the consent agenda and we have a 2018 license renewal, posh relief incorporated and individual massage license.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We'll move to new business. Item number one under new business, International Falls Rainy Lake and Rainier Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Update. Mr. Pete Schultz, please.
Good day, thank you and good afternoon. We've had those cool cereal boxes because the state of Minnesota figured it'd be very interesting to have a fun way to present information and then they're very, very parsimonious in handing them out. But I brought some extra of the cereal for anyone wanting one. And Ken, you already got one. Some more? It's probably more entertaining than what you have in your hands.
Well, I don't know, it's your report here I've got in my hand, so.
Ah. Who did this photo?
That photo was taken by Marcia Schuff. Very nice, it's gotten a lot of nice reviews. Well, every year we like to come forward after the close of our fiscal year and let you know what's been up and we gave you a packet of information and distributed that to those wishing and you know that includes a printed report along with some other printed promotional pieces that we utilize, like a group tour planner and also the Voyagers National Park's promotional material, their annual newspaper and a map of the park. Those are some of the primary things that we send to people requesting information about our area. The report includes a brief one-page summary of what we spent and what our philosophies were and where we were going. You also have the fiscal year 2017-18 profit and loss comparison to the previous year, the fiscal year 2017-18 balance sheet with a comparison to the previous year and then a series of print and online ads and feature articles that appeared because those are easy to reproduce on the copy machine and be able to share with you some things that we do in promotion are not as easy to share, they're online and things of that nature. We also included a copy of our e-newsletter and the social media promotion summary with a printout of the May e-newsletter and the statistical summary of that same newsletter and then there's a Facebook post that shows a reach of nearly 160,000 to emphasize that that's a strong way of reaching large numbers of people and that also includes the Facebook Insights Report connected to that. Then we have the May 2018 marketing report, which is based on the April figures and the reports end up with Explore Minnesota Tourism Economy reports for the past couple of years that the most recent figures are available and the Voyagers National Park release on economic impact. And I know you can all read and you've probably read through the material, but you have plenty of time to peruse at your own leisure. I thought I'd tell you a few things about what's going on with the CVB because over the past couple of years, the Board has worked with consultants to develop a plan and some goals during retreats based on the survey results and statistics that are available to us to better devise a way to reach people and have them come here and visit our area and spend their money. Board demographically has started to emphasize making an appeal to the Minnesota markets as that is where the majority of our visitors come from and that's probably not a surprise to anyone. However, there are peripheral audiences that we need to appeal to and do as much as possible, Wisconsin, North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, Illinois, Ontario, Manitoba, all of the neighboring states with the exception of Illinois where we get a fair number of visitors largely because of the huge population base of Chicago. Board also decided that in the terms of demographic, they would target specific audiences based on their activities such as fishing, canoeing, birding, motorcycle touring, hiking, so on and so forth and that they would make specific seasonal appeals, for instance, fall colors, migrating birds, hunting, that would be in the fall and then ice fishing, snowmobiling, cross-country skiing, snowshoeing in the winter. Spring fishing season's very big, so is sturgeon fishing. Migrating birds are also something birders come to look for in the spring and of course summer recreation, fishing, boating, camping, the type of thing that Voyagers National Park is all about and Rainy Lake is well-known for. The Board's also utilizing the Explore Minnesota co-op opportunities as much as possible with a strong support for the online portions of that available co-op and an example there would be we utilized Ad Taxi through them last year. Ad Taxi first geo-targeted all the people attending the Northwest Sports Show, which means if you were there and you had a cellphone, your ID was targeted and then we turned around and used Ad Taxi to send messages to those people when they're looking online or any opportunity that's available and we purchased 100,000 impressions, so if 50,000 people were at the Northwest Sports Show, they all received the message twice. And that's of course to reinforce the other messages that we put out there. For instance, we had an ad in the flyer that's distributed at the sports show, had an ad in the statewide guide that's distributed at the sports show and then had our books available through the Explore Minnesota booth. Take five, on the other hand, another online marketing effort targeted 300,000 people throughout the five-state region that had searched walleye fishing online and so our message was placed in front of them. Of course, it's a designed message appropriate to that audience and right now the CVB is reaching out to the social media with the Instagram contest where we're asking people to share our message with three of their friends and perhaps get them onboard with us and increase that audience of Instagram people that are checking us out. Board also started meeting as a committee to review the marketing options and make recommendations on those marketing options so that the regular board meeting would have more time to focus on policy discussions and the direction that the Board wishes to go in promoting the area and that's been working out very well. The marketing committee meets for about two, three hours and looks over all of the options and makes recommendations to the Board and that's streamlined the regular board meeting to about an hour, hour and a half and that makes it much more palatable to the regular board members and those that are truly interested in the marketing are able to take part in that discussion. Speaking of the board members, we need to thank some that stepped down when their terms expired this year. Kelly Franz representing the City of International Falls, Callie Briggs representing Coochin County and Mary Jane Hanan representing Rainy Lake Hospitality. International Falls has appointed Joanne Dorn Hecker and approved Joanne to the place of the International Falls rep and Coochin County has appointed Brian McBride. We're thankful for those appointments and appreciate it. And a quick note that the 2018-19 budget is optimistic. We have projected that lodging tax revenues will remain the same and hopefully see an increase that despite the loss of revenue from the TP Motel and the old International Motor Lodge/Nights Inn. We're optimistic because our info requests have been very strong this year, well exceeding last year's numbers and we expect some new tourism businesses to be coming online in the area, which will increase the draw and there are some infrastructure improvements that will also help coming up in the future, being Highway 53 rebuild, the Minnesota 11 East improvements, possible safe harbor dockage area in Rainier, those are all developments that could greatly enhance the tourism in the area. And then I thought I'd also touch on the fact that we do cooperate regionally and throughout the state to help promote the area. Destination Voyagers National Park was able to acquire an ad to put in USA Today's National Parks publication, which is available all summer throughout the nation and we have had some inquiries as a result of that ad and that's a good thing. So DVNP does also cooperate with Voyager Country ATV in the effort to develop ATV trails that will interconnect all of the Gateway communities and provide mapping so that people will be able to go from Gateway. And I should mention that we've been very fortunate in dealing with Voyagers National Park, that Bob DeGrosse is looking at ways to make it possible for ATVs to visit the visitor centers. Right now, an ATV could drive up to practically into the Ash River Center or the International Falls or Rainy Lake Center, but not actually go there because you can't travel on the parkland. The county road up to the parkland is okay, but not the park. So he's working on a rule to allow that you'd be able to pull into the parking lot and actually get on a tour boat or, or something of that nature. We also work with the Minnesota Arrowhead Association, they're repeating a very successful online regional promotion that they did last year. It did not feature summer because most of the communities do okay in the summer, but rather promoted fall and winter trips and there was enough money left over to do some promotion in spring and so we're repeating that process this year. It was largely online and they were able to look at everything that had the best and most promising numbers and repeat those practices and throw away the ones that did not have such a good response and hold the money in reserve to see what we might want to do in the future. Also, Explore Minnesota at the statewide level continues to generate leads and website participation. They underwrite the co-op ads and they provide tourism grant money, which we utilize as much as possible. And in the larger regional cooperation coming up, we'll be working with the World Plowing Organization and our friends at Lake of the Woods County to help promote the 2019 World Plowing Competition. You didn't know there was a World Plowing Competition? You do now. And there are 34 teams from around the world that will bring their tractors and plow rigs to Lake of the Woods County to compete and the last time this competition was held in North America, it was in a little burg in Alberta and they were overrun with hundreds of thousands of people. So that's coming up in the fall of 2019 and we hope to have some of that overflow here. Also, if you can imagine somebody that has enough money to ship their plow and their tractor to another country for a plowing competition, they got a little time on their hands and some spending money. They arrive a week early or stay a week later and tour the area and we're working to provide them all of the information for that process as well. That's a thumbnail sketch of what the CVB has been up to and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
I do have some.
Thank you, Pete. Counselor Jacksaw?
I was looking at your financial report and I am concerned because you have a negative income of $22,000 and cash of $23,000, which means that if operations continue as they have this year, that you would be in a situation of having no cash at the end of 2018 fiscal year. And that concerns me, so I asked the question about sustainability. Can we continue to operate with this picture here?
Yes, the figures that you see in the profit and loss statement, in fact, I made a little notation on the opening sheet, those, as had been mentioned earlier, are the council's concerns are a product of timing. We had set money into our reserve fund for the printing of a vacation planner in 2016 and those funds transferred out from that reserve fund to pay that following and the timing of the generation of these reports and those payments do not quite match and we are again selling advertising space for another vacation planner, which will...
So the net income of a negative loss really reflects a transfer to a reserve account? Well, where is that reserve account?
On the profit and loss.
Sorry to do this to you, but I got it.
Oh, I know you love numbers.
Yeah.
Take a look on the profit and loss statement. That's not where the, those figures are, it's on the balance sheet previous year comparison. There you see the amount in the reserve funds. Last year, there were 30,000 in the reserve funds that had to come out to pay for the printing.
How come I don't see that? I don't see it on here.
It's the fourth page in.
Okay, I'm looking at the balance sheet, is that what I should be looking at?
Yes, Convention and Visitors Bureau Balance Sheet Previous Year Comparison.
Okay.
And you see you have the checking...
Oh, the reserve fund.
Checking register and reserve fund and the balance of that, bulk of that reserve fund came out to pay for the printing of the vacation planner. And it's the timing of making the payments and making the transfers that ends up with the negative figures on the profit and loss statement. If you're looking at the balance sheet, we're stable, we're on par with what we were last year, 23,000 total assets versus 24,000, so it's within $1,000 and yes, we believe it's sustainable and we are.
Okay, well, that's all I really am concerned about, is the sustainability. If you're confident that we are, then that's great because the work you do is invaluable. I just want to make sure that we're in a strong footing. I still, so ultimately that $22,000 loss is due to the transfer into the reserve account. Okay. Great, thank you.
Counselor Droba?
Pete, this is the fourth time I think you've came here and given this and last year it sounded like you guys were getting a little bit deeper into online marketing and now you guys have dove full-fledged in, it seems and it sounds like you guys are getting some really good results from that. 160,000 hits on a Facebook post is pretty dang good and all that does is build the area and build the marketing from the area and I think what you guys did with, at the sports convention, that's very outside-the-box thinking and I think that that's what's going to help us in the long run and I think everything you just told us is really a credit to your department and everything that you guys are doing over there. I think it looks really, really good and these are pretty neat too, but congratulations, that's really good stuff.
Thank you, Harley. Further questions? I have a couple and remind me of your fiscal year, is it May through April?
Yes, May through April 30th.
That's what I remembered. The, and so the, on your first paragraph in the report there, the 175,000 that you took in from the local lodging tax district, you pointed out that we've lost a couple of facilities. Have you seen those, have you seen that income increasing, that gross income, the past few years and it just seems as though there's been more traffic lately, but I don't know that that results in heads on beds all the time?
Not necessarily so and increases in the tax remittances do not necessarily reflect increases in occupancy levels, but in general, yes, the lodging tax has been increasing both in the International Falls area and Rainy Lake area and it practically doubled in Rainier and we expect that will continue to show some increase just based on the number of inquiries. I'm not sure where I plucked the figure from on the top of my head, but I think it was 644 additional requests for information we had this spring that we attributed to AAA two-page spread, that there's an example in there. 640 more people, that's a huge increase in the number of inquiries and these are people that are absolutely interested in coming here, they wouldn't contact us directly to seek that information. It's not like they're at the Mall of America just wandering around looking for something to kill five minutes and grab the first magazine they see, although we do have rack space at the Mall of America.
Second question then goes to the comment that you made with regard to the ATVs and being able to visit park facilities are, and help me, because I know you spent a lot of time on this issue, are side-by-sides that are street, allowed to be running on streets, are they considered an ATV or would they not be allowed there also?
There's a gray area in that and Bob is seeking some advice from the higher-ups in the legal areas of the National Park Service because the side-by-sides that are equipped with the proper safety devices can be allowed on roads and in Coochin County, St. Louis County, Itasca County, they're allowed on all county roads regardless. And yes, because it's a technically a highway-licensed vehicle, it should be allowed to enter the parking lot and go to the visitor's center, but no, the legislation specifically states that all-terrain vehicles are not allowed, so they are technically an all-terrain vehicle, not, even though they're highway-licensed, they are not a highway-licensed vehicle.
Okay, good to understand that. Other questions for Pete? Counselor Droba?
One last question. From all of the work you guys have been doing with sending out the information, having it available on the internet and doing stuff like that, do you have any way of finding out how many, for every thousand searches you guys have, how many people do come to the area? Do you have any way to come up with those numbers or no?
It would be very difficult to come up with a formula that would be accurate in predicting that, but thanks to online things, we are able to track some and it's very, very interesting. I'm going to use the example of our e-newsletter. For instance, I can check and see if somebody requested information from us if they've received our e-newsletter and then I can see how many times they've opened it, whether they clicked on any links and we can learn an awful lot and I have followed up with well over a dozen people that open our e-newsletter, follow us in the e-newsletter and then request additional information in our planning trips here and several of them have shown up at our desk to say, "Thanks for being involved in sending us the information." A good example of getting that interaction is with our most recent e-newsletter, we offered people that we would tell them about alternatives to I-35 because Minnesota Department of Transportation is going to be causing serious delays on I-35 this summer. And the first time that went out in the May newsletter, we had a half a dozen people that asked us for alternatives and we were able to carry on a nice, long conversation with them and get them all straightened out on coming here, up 65 over 169 and I even had one guy who wanted directions from far western Missouri and so I accommodated him and we repeated that because I figured six responses the first time around was pretty good. We repeated it in the July newsletter, which went out Saturday and I've already had one request there.
Effectiveness, but if you don't do it...
Yeah.
Then you know.
That is the beauty of online because...
But there is a disaster then if you don't do it.
You know, we can see how many people opened the email, how many, and you know, it's more trackable.
Good, further questions or comments? Very good report, Pete, as always. Thank you for taking the time and the effort to come and share that and thank you for mentioning Joanne Dorn Hecker, who will be joining you at your next meeting and I know that she'll do a good job representing the citizens of International Falls.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two under new business is the resolution authorizing execution of the Minnesota Department of Transportation 2019 Grant Agreement for Air Service Marketing between the State of Minnesota and the International Falls Coochin County Airport Commission. Your pleasure with that resolution.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs to adopt the resolution. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and resolution is adopted approving the agreement for air service marketing. Thank you. Item number three is a resolution approving the premises permit application for the International Voyager Snowmobile Club to allow pull tabs and electronic pull tabs at J.C.'s House of Fine Foods and Spirits LLC, 1500 Highway 71, International Falls. Your pleasure with the resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Droba. Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and resolution is adopted approving the location for... Motion is carried and resolution is adopted, approving the location for pull tabs at JC's House of Fine Foods. Thank you. Item number three is to approve the agreement between the city and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49 for the public works and administrative office staff effective January 1, 2018, to December 31, 2020.
As Chair of the HR Committee, on behalf of the committee, I would recommend that we draft that contract.
Motion by Counsel Jaxson to approve the contract.
Second.
Second by Counsel Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the agreement.
I'd just like to thank your participation, Brian's participation. It was a fairly lengthy procedure, but I think we...
City Administrator, any comments?
No, I would agree with Counsel Jaxson. It was a time-consuming process. And I felt the summary of all the... To get there, but I think the... With the terms in the agreement and Counsel's action on this and moving forward.
Thank you. I think also, certainly the union's negotiating committee, two of the employees here, Jason Shobloom and Harold Scholler, they were very good to work with, along with the business agent. Also would want to mention the mediator. I think that he did an excellent job, even though the last day was about a sixteen-hour day. But we were able to bring a conclusion to the agreement discussions and reach this agreement. So further questions or discussion?
This is the last contract we have with the unions, correct?
Yes. The other two union contracts are completed and approved. And this has been approved by the members of the Local 49. So just takes our agreement here, and we will have contracts for three years. Further discussion? Question?
Hi.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and the agreement is approved with the Operating Engineers Local 49. Thank you. Item number five under New Business is to consider the agreement with CGI Communications to prepare an approved, no-cost community video program available for viewer access for three years from a link on our website and authorized signatures. City Administrator?
Mayor, I received an inquiry over the phone and had an opportunity to visit with a representative from CGI Communications about the program that they have offering community video programs to communities at no cost to the city. And I've had an opportunity to actually view examples. The city of Chanhasen is the one that I viewed. They also provided a sample for the city of North Branch. There's also other communities in Minnesota. They afford an opportunity. They offer a... They write the script. We've given actually three opportunities to edit the script into a... Kind of deliver the message that we want. They'll bring a production crew here. They film. They'll also look at still photos and they'll draft a message that can be broadcast over the website for a period of three years. Buy this to the city free of cost, is that we've provided in the packet of materials a sample letter that they distribute to the businesses and to other organizations as well, that can set up a link on this webpage around the perimeter of it. So, you know, if you're a... I think Chanhasen had one of their local city attorneys that actually did a video, and it was a marketing piece for his law office, that when people were interested in the program for the city of Chanhasen, then they could refer a... High end of the length that that attorney had and find out more... And I think they charged a fee for that. So that's how CGI Communications... After having reviewed that and visiting with you, Briggs... Falls participates. They are working now to try and firm up their schedule in the communities that they're working with, so that's what they need, and then put it all together.
Questions for the city administrator?
I have all kinds of them. I'm inclined to vote no on this. Number one, we have a grant that some of these functions may be done by a local business. Secondly, I would like to know whatever happened to the Heart of the Continent effort that had a website and was supposed to highlight our businesses. Thirdly, I do not want to set a precedence where we're linking... You're using our website for a business to then promote their business. So I have a little issue with that. I certainly couldn't consider this without further research. Also, fourthly, I did research CGI, and there are some complaints about them, one from the city, one from a county unit. So I have to think about this more and look more deeply, consider the grant, look at what opportunities we might take advantage of locally to do this very same thing. And finally, I guess I would say, if we're going to have a link, it would be nice to have a link to our KCCTV.org, which is our franchise website, which covers local events. But, you know, local parades, local...
First of all, we don't have a motion.
No, I don't.
No.
That's part of my... It's an argument that I'm coming from this side of it, looking at... I don't think we have enough information. We need to do more research.
Is there a motion to consider an agreement with CGI?
I'll move.
Motion by Counsel Briggs. Or second to the motion? Or a second time, is there a second to the motion? As a member of the council, I would second the motion. We have before us an agreement with CGI Communications. I guess I'm not sure that I understood all of your points, Counsel Jaxson, with the Heart of the Continent, and you had one other before that.
Well, I mean, we did have... I thought, did I not understand a couple of years ago? We spent some money and we endorsed an effort by National Geographic to provide a website that creates this Heart of the Continent concept between Under Bay, Duluth, and us. Then we were parts... There was a... It was a triangle-shaped geographic area, and it was businesses that were supposed to contribute to that. I don't know what happened to that. But if it was under the auspices of the CBB, we're not. But nothing came of that.
It's right here on my phone.
Oh.
It's the Heart of the Continent app. And it has almost every business in town, hotels, gas stations.
Okay. So we have something like that, then?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, this would be a duplication of that.
Oh.
Okay.
This would be a... As I viewed the city of Chanhasen video on their website, the city's website, there was just a place that said, "Video." They had a... Just information about the city of International Falls, the city of Chanhasen. And they did have around the... When you clicked on it, there were a number of sponsors. I don't know if they all had their own link from there. I didn't try those. I noticed, as the city administrator pointed out, an attorney in the Chanhasen area. There was a church, a church that I have attended in Chanhasen, so I was familiar with the name. So there was a number of, I don't know, probably eight or 10 advertising sponsors that were listed around the video. And the video just told information about International Falls and some of the highlights that the community would have. It seemed very emotional and certainly at no cost to the city. Sponsors would be paying for that.
This business isn't located in the...
Well, they would seek businesses here in the community.
Well, I understand that. But the money would flow to CGI from our businesses for their... Right. What I'm saying, and my other objections were, there may be duplication with Heart of the Continent. I haven't obviously looked at the app, but they certainly are promoting resorts anyway on there, I would assume. I think that without understanding where this broadband grant might lead us and what kind of community website that may come out of that potentially, what opportunities there might be for some advertising firms in town, I'm not eager to just jump into this and hand them... And besides that, I mean, you're giving, you're using a website to promote a business that, you know, you are, because the link is part of the city property and it links to them. So I think it's premature. And then, as I said before, there are complaints out there against CGI and...
Go ahead, Counsel Drogba.
I'm voting no, so...
I think that Counsel Jaxson has some good points in what she's saying. I do think that we are... Counsel Jaxson has put in a couple of things that don't make sense in the argument.
I always make sense, Herb.
Fair enough. I won't argue that. You're my favorite.
Thank you.
But the Heart of the Continent, completely separate item. I think that that's completely different to what this is. This is a link on our website, the city of International Falls website, where people can look at businesses that choose to advertise on there. Excuse me. And we can have some informational videos put up about the city of International Falls. And I don't know what we would do with that, if it would be safety videos of... Or potholes, things that are happening in the city, or if we're going to be looking to feature tourism. I don't know what the city outlook would be on that. But the businesses in our community, there are businesses that do this. KCCTV could produce these videos. We don't... In my opinion, we don't need to give something of value, which is our website, away for free. I do think that there is real merit to what this company wants to do, but I do think that if we give a little bit of interest in our own community, there may be businesses or nonprofits in our own community that can do the same exact thing, taking some of Counsel Jaxson's considerations to heart. So I'm all for this project, maybe not necessarily with the first company that comes to our door asking to do it.
There are... I'll tell them tech, too.
There's multiple businesses and nonprofits in our community that could do the same work.
I guess I don't see the correlation between this and the broadband grant at all.
I don't either.
Well, I mean, you could use the broadband grant for any host of things, and you could create a community website with that grant.
I don't know that that's the case.
Yeah, I would dis...
In viewing the Chanhasen one, they spoke to some of the major businesses or manufacturers that they had in Chanhasen. They spoke to recreation, economic development. There was, I think, probably four or five... The video was about four minutes long, as I remember. And it was... It just spoke to a number of those areas, and it kind of highlighted that to bring attention to the community. I really think it's got very good value and certainly would support it very strongly.
May I just give a rebuttal? I agree that it's strong. It's a very good thing for our community, for our website. I know our own public library is able to do exactly what this is. We have a tech in Don Kosek that could do exactly what this is. I do get a little bit... I don't even know how to put it in words. We would be building something on the city website at the expense of our local businesses. It would definitely be their choice if they wanted to advertise on the website. That is their choice, and they have that right. However, that again is money that's going to be leaving our community and heading down to another community, another business. We do have businesses that could offer the service and possibly, based off of what they're going to get for advertising, you would make it worth it for a local nonprofit or a business to do that. We have very talented people in our community. They could do this work. So I understand what you're saying, and I hold 100% of the same value to what this is as you do. I just see it as something that we could create in our own community if we push this off. I'm not saying we should table it, but if we push this off for a month and we just said, after this gets out, if there's anyone in the community that would want to put in a proposal for... To do something for a free website, there are people that would do this. You can make literally thousands of dollars off of advertisement. The advertisement dollars would be leaving our community. And if we had a group that chose to do this in our community, they could keep those advertising dollars in our community.
I think the CGI would be doing the marketing, so there's no expense to the city in any of this. You're right, the advertisers would be putting in their dollars, and they would be going to CGI, but they're going to be taking on all of the expense of making the video. You know, there is absolutely no cost to the city to be able to market itself on its own website. Very, very professionally done. I would advise you to take a look at Chanhasen. I did not look at the North Branch one, but I will make it a point to do that. And city administrator, do you have any further thoughts? You've had the discussion with the representative from CGI.
Well, I did. And it looks like this is something they've been in business for 30 years. Before I presented it here to the council, I did forward the information to both Pete Schultz and the chamber president. What the impression was, and, you know, in less than 24 hours, one of them had done a check on the Better Business Bureau. Apparently, they've been... There's no black mark from them. One person did indicate that there was a complaint from one of the people that participated in it. But, you know, when you've been in business for 30 years, I think that there's going to be... To qualify those complaints based on, you know, what led to the problem that this particular person had. So I'd like to do some diligence on that. I was comfortable in the quality of the product, having viewed only Chanhasen, since I didn't look at North Branch's... Opportunity that we could market ourselves via a website with professional writers assisting us in the script and the video production. And so I just saw it as an opportunity that didn't...
I would like time to... I think the council should take some time, as Counsel Drogba suggested, and put this idea... Ideas are cheap. It's always in the execution, of course. And maybe the capacity doesn't exist to be able to duplicate this offering. But I think we should give time for this. They're not going to take... They're not going to take the offer off the table if we take a little time with this.
I don't know if they will or not.
Of course not.
I have no idea. Counsel Briggs?
Well, I think I have to agree with Counsel Jaxson and Drogba that, especially if it's a choice of dollars leaving to a company not in the city without at least offering it to a local business, I think I can hold off and wait and see if Small Town Tech or some of the other places that Counsel Drogba brought up, give them that opportunity. And I want some assurance that the quality of the product's going to be there also, so...
Maybe even the...
But any opportunity to give it to a local business, I think we owe it to the local business to give them that opportunity.
All right. Do you want a motion to table for two weeks to decide? What is the direction here?
I think it's more than two weeks.
I was going to say a month for... I'll move to give a local company a month to give us a proposal.
Second.
Are we going to be sending out something, or...
Are we going to, are we going to be sending out something, or I guess, how are we going to, you know, are we going to be spending time, administrative time, to start seeking? I guess I'm struggling with that.
Well, that's why we need a month, because there is, I mean, we all have connections sitting at the table. Charlie has a lot, Brian. We can reach out to the entities that might be interested, have a discussion, have more information to come back with as a discussion item at the next council meeting, and then the next after that, that's a month then, act on. Act on CGI if there is no...
I think we can find that out in two weeks. I don't think we ought to wait a month.
Well, I think you have to come back and discuss what the options are before you can make a decision, so that takes time. So I think we do need a month.
Motion?
Motion was...
Move to table for a month.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Counselor Briggs and second by Counselor Jackson to table for one month. I'd put it at the July 2 meeting. Put on the motion to table.
Aye.
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 No vote no. There being three, four, and one against, the motion carries to table. Move to item six on the agenda, and that's under new business, to reset the public hearing on the ordinance for the proposed changes to the Home Rule Charter to 4:15 PM at the July 2, 2018 meeting. Requires council action to reset that public hearing.
Come on.
Motion by Counselor Jackson.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, please. The reason for the request and having it on the agenda was that the, in reviewing the state statute after the council took action to set the public hearing on the June 18, it requires a minimum of 14 days and a maximum of 30 days after the public hearing is set to hold it, and we were preparing the notice last Friday, and we couldn't meet the, we only could... ...validate the proceedings, so that's why we're asking...
Very good. Thank you. Further questions or discussion?
Yes, on another topic, is that what you're asking?
No, on this, on this motion.
You haven't voted on that?
No. I'm going to call the question. City Attorney.
There were some discussions that Ken and I have had regarding the charter changes and in section two that was forwarded, they talk about making, putting a reference in the city code and including that in the charter, and both Ken and I, I think, were having trouble figuring out what was really meant by that, and we thought that maybe that should not be included in the changes that we're talking about making here, because there are additional changes that are contemplated, and I think that that aspect of it... Confusing to Ken and I, it's probably more confusing to others that aren't dealing with these things on a regular basis, and so I don't know... Adam, do you know why that specific request was being made or included there?
There was a footer that violation of a misdemeanor, violation of a misdemeanor. All your footer on all of the...
In terms of process, City Attorney, we can do the public hearing, and the council could, and I don't know whether we have to accept all of those, or we can individually accept those items and pass them, and then send some back to the Charter Commission for consideration?
Following the public hearing, you could certainly adopt some of their recommendations and not all of their recommendations, yes.
We can go forth with this motion and have the public hearing, and then the council can decide, having reviewed the submission from the Charter Commission, we can decide which of these here we're going to move with.
That's what I would believe, yes.
Very good. All right. Further discussion with regard to the motion then, to set the public hearing for the ordinance on the proposed changes to the Home Rule Charter on July 2, 2018. Any further discussion? City Administrator.
Mayor, I just wanted to make clear that one of the handouts that you had tonight was the changes that were proposed in the ordinance, and what I did, just for your, I highlighted that section that City Attorney was referencing, and I've also added underlines and strikeouts so that you could see what version that was included in the packet didn't show that, just kind of showed the language as it was. I've tried to illustrate the changes so that it was clear to the council as well as to the public, so that's the version that you had is before your table tonight, and, you know, my guess is that that section might have been a carryover from another ordinance. Fire Chief serves as the Chair of the Charter Commission, and I'll agree as a charter, I think, and I serve as a secretary. violations were clear, but I don't know that that's really pertinent, changes being suggested to the charter itself, so I don't know that that section has to be included at all in the draft ordinance, but have that discussion after the public hearing.
No further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No vote yes, motion is carried, and the public hearing for the proposed changes to the Home Rule Charter will be on July 2 at that meeting at 4:15 PM. Thank you. Further under new business?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, where, I know you were visiting with the management at Buildrite, where, what's happening there? Could you share?
At this point, nothing that we know of.
Okay.
Had one person who has had some interest and, but don't know, I don't know whether, how far that will go at this point.
So we don't have a response yet to this, a formal response from KETA or...
We have, we don't have anything further from our congressional delegation on whether or not this will qualify the employees for additional unemployment benefits, and we're thinking that from Congressman Nolan and Senators Smith and Klobuchar.
Is KETA taking steps to... At this point, it looks like the plant will go down.
It's down.
Permanently.
It is.
There are no buyers.
Well, I said, there's one person who has expressed an interest, but that's as far as it goes. So they're going to try to tour it, I believe, in the next couple of weeks.
Well, what is...
But we don't know whether the owners are interested in selling. Don't know that at this point. We have not been able to have conversations with the owners.
Have a document, a plan on this yet, or...
I know that, you know, we've talked to them, we've met with the controller out there, Paul Nevin and I, but beyond that, there has not been any other discussion.
Forty-three, and the spinoff, I think, is what, 100, did they say?
I would guess that it's more than that.
About 100, yeah.
Any further under new business? Now we'll move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Just briefly, Mayor, this week we have a few meetings coming up. The Charter Commission is meeting again at 5 o'clock on Wednesday. There's a meeting of the Special Police Department Fund that you had set up as a council here, meeting or two ago. Their first meeting will be on June 7 at 10 o'clock AM, and then there's an HR committee meeting later that... Fire department to talk over issues. I would point out that the reason for my report and my being here is the... Stay with the weekend, so they didn't have...
Thank you. Questions for the City Administrator? All right, thank you. City Attorney?
Mayor, Council, I think Ken has included in the handouts for today the order that was signed by Judge Bench, so we now do have a full complement of official members to the Charter Commission, so that has been an issue for quite some time, and now that's resolved, and they are meeting regularly and needs to be done. In addition to that, I've had several conversations with Matt Donahue, and we're hoping to have a new place, wrap all this up with the Donahue property by the end of this week, so I should have something on the agenda for the next meeting in two weeks to hopefully approve that as a plan going forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Drogba?
Steve, maybe you could answer this, or the fire chief for the Charter Board. Isn't it rather odd that we have three people who term is up at the end of this year, and then we have seven people that are up at the end of 2020?
Those are just the new people, the way, there's 15 people on it.
Okay.
So we had five people that we had an existing order on from prior, so they weren't included, they were already there. These three that are ending at the end of the year, they're the people that had never been the subject of an order, and somehow the people that started January 1, 2007, I mean internally, they were operating as though they were on the commission, but officially there'd never been an order from the judge. So that's why this order does not include the names of all 15 members on the commission. We have, there's actually eight that will be expiring at the end of this year, and seven that will expire at the end of 2020, and so in December, we're probably going to be looking at, you know, nominating eight people for to either continue or be new members of the Charter Commission, and then that would be for a four-year term at that point in time.
Fair enough. I just looked at those numbers, and I thought there was 10 people on the charter, and I'm like, that just doesn't make sense on why we would have it staggered like that. No, that makes perfect sense.
It's kind of a catch-up order, because it somehow slipped through the cracks before.
Very good. Further questions for the City Attorney? Thank you for your work on the Charter Commission. That's very helpful. Chief Manasa.
I believe my report was included in the council packet for the month of May. We had six fire department call-outs, three ended up being city responses, three rural responses, one C and train fill. We had our monthly meeting on the 9th, which was a shared meeting training with the ambulance department, so we had Lifelink 3, who operates our air service up here, or one of the companies that provides air service up here, both Fix-Dwing and Rotorcraft, they came up and did a presentation for us. We were trying to do a landing zone training, the weather didn't cooperate with us that night, so we ended up just doing a PowerPoint presentation with both departments. Worked out very well. We also had a pump operator training on the 16th, so we had a company that does come to northern Minnesota about every other year, they make the circuit around here, and they hit all the departments with pump operator training. Very good training. We try and get our engineers and spares through that every time they're through, so that was a good training as well. And then we sent four people down to Duluth on the 19th for an engine company operations class. Got very good reviews from that. All four of those people that went down there are four of our newest firefighters. They've been waiting to get a, as part of the certification process, they have to have a live burn. It was not billed as this, but they did end up getting their live burn certificate out of this training, so it worked out very well for us. It was a good training for them to attend. Ambulance in the month of May, we had 74 911s, 56 transfers, for a total of 130 runs, compared to 121 in May of last year, and our totals for the year are up to 362 911s, 233 transfers, for a total of 595. And then, again, just our joint training with the fire department held on the 9th. Any questions?
Questions for Fire Chief Manasa? Plenty of activity in the month of May.
Absolutely.
It was a dry month for a good share of it also, which...
Started out that way.
Yes, heightened, certainly heightened the activities.
Yes, we're very lucky on the wildland fireside or grass fireside, we, I think we only responded to one, so for, as bad as the potential was in our area, we were pretty lucky, so...
Very good. Thank you. Counsel Drogba?
Just out of curiosity, with the 911 calls for the ambulance, are those just inside the city?
No, those are any of our, what's called a PSA prescribed service area, so that stretches for the City of International Falls, or for the International Falls ambulance. We go all the way up the lake, we go south to Ash River Trail roughly, a little bit past that, it's like the Sheep Ranch Corner, and then west to Birchdale. So we do have a pretty large area, I believe, off the top of my head, I think it's 989 square miles that we cover with the ambulance.
Thank you, Chief. Great report, and thanks your folks for their service to the community.
Thank you.
To reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions? Mayor's report, Counsel Drogba?
Well, it's getting to be that time again. We get to look at next year's budget, so I'm going to, we have a couple other items that we need to discuss on, at a budget finance meeting, but I think we could start at beginning of July with everything that's going on for the 4th of July, but when would everyone be available to start meeting for the budget in July?
Assuming we just do that.
Yeah.
That already.
I just know everyone tries to start taking holiday vacations in the summer, so when we can start looking to meet as a group to work out the budget.
We're going to try and do it... Council meeting type?
We definitely can.
Works best for me.
Right before the council meeting?
Yeah, like 2 o'clock or whatever.
Noon or 1:00. 1:00, I would suggest, and that way we can get a couple of departments in, but I don't know if we want to start that on the July 2 meeting with everything leading into the 4th of July, or if we want to start on the 16th, and that kind of puts us in some crunch time, but...
Do we get the financials at the end of June, by July 16? Okay. Wouldn't have them by July.
No.
So that's probably a better...
Mayor?
City Administrator?
I haven't had an opportunity to speak with Counsel Drogba about this, but, you know, we need, we need a fair amount of time for the department heads to prepare all the information, so we've got to have a productive conversation about that, so we need to try and put some information together. Costs are going to be, that's a fairly large component. Just we need to look at capital outlay, capital improvements, so, you know, I would welcome So, you know, I would welcome having a conversation at a council committee level early to talk about what maybe council priorities are in project, but I think it might be premature for I to meet with the department heads about their specific budgets. I know that you and Mayor Andy were talking with the chamber about their contract and sending letters out to try and get... I've already received one request for funding next year. We need to... We typically add in the newspaper and ask people to submit. I think it might be a little premature.
Well, then, maybe at that first meeting in July, maybe we legitimately set the priorities for 2019, and from there, we give some direction to the department heads on what we're looking for before they put together their budgets.
We can get a broad overview. Do we know what our tax capacity is by then?
I don't know, but I checked with the county auditor's office, and the other point I would bring up, though, is we had some discussions with the city engineer through the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, and they've been... ...in July, which is going to lay out what they foresee for improvements that we need to make to some of our... ...last year with them about the streets. I see that as being a key part for the Council to try and wrestle with, is how are we going to prioritize what kind of infrastructure improvement going forward in the 2019 and the future years, about being able to forecast out as far as 10-plus years with what their information that they're getting, but not have that until the end of July. Also wants to contemplate, you know, what are we going to use resources to fund some of our capital outlay improvements, and one suggestion and one option is to look at a sales tax. We need to be fairly deliberate about going through that process so that we can... The timing requirements to... Where our referendum question is.
We're getting close on the date on that, too, aren't we?
I think there's a deadline.
I think the deadline is...
I don't have the time. I don't want to...
Council needs to adopt the resolution. I believe we still have time to do that before the election.
I want to say it was 90...
I thought it was August the last time I looked at this.
Well, I will meet with the City Administrator, and we'll hammer out a couple of things, and then I'll get some information to the Council on when we'll be meeting.
I think the preliminary... Just having a council discussion without getting into the nitty-gritty right away is... I think your approach is good.
I think last year, when we were able to sit down as a council and discuss the priorities of what we were going to do for the next year, I think that worked out really well. I think we ended up going a little kitty-wampus to what the priorities were at the end of the budget, but with that being said, things change through the budget process, so I would like to have a priorities meeting to see what we want to do before we get the numbers, because that will make a big change on how we handle the budget moving forward.
The 16th, then?
I'll meet with the Administrator. Him and I will discuss it, and I'll get that with the Council. I'll have a date for the Council.
2/18 meeting?
Yes.
Give the date first.
You can really get a broad overview because our contracts are in place, and that's 75% of our budget.
Absolutely.
Well, I think we know that there's not going to be, I believe, any increase in the local government aid, given the actions by the legislature, so I think we know what our... Pretty much our income is going to be...
Without the tax capacity, with Buildright not operating, I don't know what impact that's going to have on us.
May or may not. I think... I don't know that that's going to change for this year.
Okay.
Probably taxes.
Right.
But it's good to know what that is, and then if LGA isn't going to change, we have contracts in place.
It comes down to priorities. It comes down to priorities.
We have the big picture now, obviously, you know. The information board.
On the mayor's report, just wanted to bring to your attention that we will be bringing something to the Council for the June 18 meeting on inflow and infiltration with regard to the... Also to the Sanitary District Attorney's recommendation and what the city staff believes we should be accepting or asking for. And then also attempting to try to get a meeting on blight, and would welcome councilors to attend that. I believe it's probably going to be Friday morning of this week, after 10 o'clock. City Attorney would be available for a little time there and have some discussion with Fire Chief Manasa, Kelly Myers, and City Administrator on that. Also, Public Works meeting planned right now for Tuesday, June 19, so be looking for that at 1 PM, if anyone decides they want to attend that. And it's Tuesday, June 19 at 1 o'clock at Public Works. Further to come under the reports of council committees, boards, and commissions. If not, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make any statements at this time or ask any questions? Correspondents, you have the list of concerts that will be at the park this year, and the next regular city council meeting is Monday, June 18, 2018. With that, if there's nothing further to come for the Council, they'll stand adjourned.